Okay, if I could add your attention, we're gonna go ahead and get started. I'd like to welcome everyone that's come out this afternoon. It's always a pleasure for the board to meet here at Carson House and view the history of McDowell County and feel the atmosphere that surrounds it. It's just a wonderful place for us and we enjoy it very much. And we're gonna start off our meeting tonight as we always do with a prayer and a pledge. And I'll ask the wish you're eldest be willing to lead us in our prayer and I'll ask Commissioner Brown to lead us in our pledge.
Let's stand. Our forebears, thank you so much for allowing us just to meet tonight to talk about county business. I'd like to ask for your hand in guiding us in to do the right thing for the county. I'd like to thank you for answering prayers and for you always being there for us when we need. And pray.
There's a flag up here, there's a huge one out there. Attention, salute.
Attention, salute. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to your love and to your citizens, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all.
Okay, down here, motion we approve the meeting, so move. Motion is second in discussion. All of the people say aye. Down here, motion that we approve the agenda for the night, so move.
So, Mr. Chairman, could you grab under old business item F for opioid lawsuit update, please?
I'd make an amendment to the motion to what was just mentioned.
Okay. So, we would add an F opioid lawsuit in the old business. Any discussion on that? All of the people say aye.
Aye.
Okay. First on the agenda tonight, we, under our appointments, we have a presentation of Carson House funding and we have Congress Senator Warren Daniels here to make a presentation. We'll ask Senator Daniels to come up and Chuck.
I'm an advocate.
Chuck, would you like to say a word before?
I'll say a short word. Can I bring my group up?
Absolutely.
The board, you guys wanna come up? So, welcome to the Carson House.
Partners too.
Absolutely.
Are all partners. Home. Cousins too. All of them.
So, we have a combination of people here. Some are Carson House board members and some are what are called the friends of the Carson House.
Partners.
The partners, always calling them friends. Get mixed up at the library, the partners. And so, there's a lot of support for what we do. The home was built in 1793, well over 200 years ago. The first meeting of the, what was then called the Court of Pleas and Quarter Sessions, which is the forerunner for the Board of Commissioners, took place in this house in the spring of 1843, which is right at 180 years ago. So, county government was formed here. The city of Marion was established here several months later. Doug, would you mind doing two or three, just two minutes on the interpretive center?
I'll be happy to do that. Can I get my notes?
Well, is that okay?
Yeah.
We'll be very clear.
So, thank you for coming. Isn't it beautiful? We're so happy to have this facility to be able to welcome folks that have a great time outdoors with a little shelter. Good night to everybody.
So, Martha, otherwise known as Ingette, Martha Jordan, is the executive project here at Carson House. Doug is vice chair.
And this is just a quick update on the interpretive center and the funding that we're, the check that we're gonna be handed in just a minute is going to fund the interpretive center, which is basically a visitor center. We've operated for all these years without a visitor center, but now we see the possibility of building one, so that's what we're doing. Besides all of the practical functions of a visitor center, like proper bathrooms, having offices for our staff, we're also gonna have exhibits that tell the story of this place. You know, up until this point, we tell the story just by giving people tours of the house, but now we'll be able to have permanent displays that tell that story and hopefully do it a little bit better, a little bit more thoroughly, you know? All right, so where things stand right now, we have completed the schematic design for the building. We've completed an engineering study to make sure that we won't run into problems building so close to Buck Creek. That was important for us. We will soon begin discussions with local builders to try to determine what builder we'll work with and the plan is to do a negotiated contract. We have developed the concepts for the exhibits that will go into the house. There'll be two major exhibits, one that provides the context for the house, what history was happening around us that sort of is the setting for this house and what happened here on the property. And then we also intend to have a very deliberate exhibit about enslavement in this part of the world. It is a chapter of our history that has a very dark side to it. We want to present it in a very clear light and without shying from the truth about how enslavement happened in this part of the world. We will be meeting with fourth grade teachers later this month and to make sure that the way that we present these stories are as useful as possible to fourth grade teachers who are teaching North Carolina history for the first time. We're excited about that. We have set January as the kickoff time for a public fundraising effort. With the check that we're gonna get with $500,000 of our own funds, we're still about $200,000 to $300,000 short of what we will need for our project. Our total budget is about 1.2 million. We know there's gonna be a chunk of debt. We're hoping to keep the debt portion of that to 200,000 or less. So, it'll be important to have a robust public fundraising effort and we're gonna kick that off in January. As of right now, the goal, I am hopeful that we'll be able to break ground in the second quarter of next year and then it'll take a year or so to build it, get the exhibits installed. And so, hopefully when we open for our 2024 season, we'll be able to cut the ribbon on the interpretive center. So, we thank you all very much for your support for this important project.
And so, we thank the senator as well, Senator Daniels.
Will allow you to forward.
Well, good afternoon, everybody. Thank you to the commissioners for inviting me here today and for this presentation. I just wanna say that it's an honor when we get, as a state legislature, to be able to contribute on behalf of the taxpayers to worthy nonprofits. And over my 12 years in the legislature, I've gotten to the opportunity to do this on a number of occasions to worthwhile charities in several other counties. Haven't represented McDowell County before. So, when we met earlier this year, kind of during the budget process with Chuck and Chuck and his staff gave us a really nice tour of the facility and talked about your mission and what you wanted to do, then I thought that, well, this is something that maybe we could fit into our nonprofit grant process. And so, we never know exactly what's gonna be available because, you know, the other things in the budget come first, education, healthcare, highway patrol and those things. But we've had a good budget year, we had a strong surplus and there was, in fact, some money that we could set aside for the good things that people do in the private sector and nonprofit entities. So, we appreciate the county being the facilitator of this because these funds are actually contributed to the county and they have to agree that they want to contribute to the Carson House. So, without further ado, here's contribution Chuck to the historic Carson House and it's in the amount of, I wanted to move the decimal and make it $37.50.
Others probably did.
But I know you said your goal was, I think, a little over a million dollars, so hopefully this will get you well on your way towards that goal, $375,000. And we know that this is gonna be great for the students here and for the community here and we look forward to coming for maybe the groundbreaking and then the grand opening when that's happening. I don't know when your, what your construction timetable is, but imagine it'll be in the next couple of years.
We're very appreciative and I dare say the project would be very, very challenged without this. We would be facing great difficulty pulling this off. So, Senator, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Everybody?
Thank you.
I don't think this won't fit in an ATM, so you may have to take it to the counter and deposit it on the counter card.
Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
Okay. Thank you.
Hey, that's great. And I believe we have another very special person here tonight that we want to recognize. And this is a lady that has been in 60 years of her life, the school system and this county and has made a big difference in this county and in the school system. And we are very proud to welcome her here tonight, Ms. Charlie Mae Mace. We have a little award for you and we'd like you to come up and as you come up, we're gonna give everyone up here a chance to say a word. We'll just start with Patrick. Would you like to say a word?
I'd love to. I served with Charlie for 10 years on the school board and when I first was brought on, she was very instrumental in helping me get pointed in the right direction. And she and I had a wonderful relationship as far as serving on the board and her helping me out when I had questions. And it was very, she was very instrumental to me in learning as a young board member how to operate. And it was now, she and my wife are just very close friends and I do wanna just say thank you so much for being there for me, being there for my family, being there for the kids of this county for so many years, being there for the other school board members, being there for the superintendents. You saw a few and, but you are truly an amazing woman and I just say I love you and I appreciate you.
Charlie Mae, I didn't wanna say that. I would say you have a record in the state of North Carolina for what you've done. The length of your service is tremendous. And she does look a day over 35, doesn't she? Is that all right? And we're so proud of you and we just thank you for the service to the community, to the school system, to the children, and we wish you the very best in your retirement. You raised and set the bar high for anybody to follow you and we know that and you're just a tremendous person in our community, well thought and respected by everyone and looked to by a lot of people for that wisdom and leadership and guidance. So, thank you for all you've done and we're gonna miss you greatly.
I like the way everybody's saying, plus I think that attitude is one that you've always had, the most wonderful attitude of that work. If it was called work, it was more partnership with you and I appreciate it. I thank you for every day that you serve.
Thank you for your service and dedication, not only to the county, but to all the children in the county. I appreciate everything you've done, so many years of service. Congratulations.
And I think Fred could add a word, he'd like to say.
Sir, with Mr. Mace, Charlie Mae, like Patrick, Commissioner Ellis did, from 1984 to 1990. And as Patrick said, she took us new members, led us through the process, trained us, kept us on a steady course. She weathered, I don't know how many superintendents. Let me tell you something, in the early 80s, the school board was not quite like it is now. It was a lot of turmoil. There was a couple of members that would vote against adjournment. I think about it. But Charlie Mae was helpful to me as a board member and as a school board attorney. If I needed to find a map or know what about a policy or a resolution, first place I went was to Charlie Mae and she could find it. Always had the smile. Thank you for your help and your service. The county greatly appreciates your efforts.
And we also have a caller here tonight. Would you like to say a word?
Sure, thanks, sir. Ms. Charlie, I arrived here in 2013 and I sat beside you at board meetings for the next, what, eight years until this past summer. And like everyone else here, I'm truly impressed and by your faithful service to the county and the school system, but I even more cherish your friendship and your guidance personally since 2013. And I will always appreciate all of the help and lessons you taught me over the years. So, thank you for that. Thanks, sir.
I'm also gonna give our esteemed mayor, Steve Little, a chance to say a word.
Thank you, Charlie Mae. Anybody who knows you knows that if it's worth doing well, that's the way you do things. You always have. You're one of the most popular and well appreciated and loved people in the whole county because you've touched so many lives. I can't even count the number high enough, the numbers of students who have indirectly benefited from your wisdom and your good judgment and your compassion and your sharing your knowledge with the school board members. We are a better place because of you. Thank you.
She is certainly a lovely lady inside and out and we all love her, Charlie Mae. And we've got this nice little certificate here that says, "Certified Appreciation Award is given to Charlie Mae Mace." This certificate is given to Charlie Mae Mace for 60 years of dedicated public service to McDowell County schools. We'd like to give that to you and say thank you.
It's an honor for me. And 60 years ago, when I entered Nevo School, that was the first year, Senator, that the state of North Carolina allotted school secretaries in the state of North Carolina, 1961. And I had graduated from Nevo and I was enrolled in what was then the Marion College of Commerce to start in the fall. And my superintendent had been my former principal. And so, he went to the new principal of the school and said, "I have somebody that already knows the office and already knows the school and I think she'll come to work for you," because it was only going to be three days away, five hours a day. But this is a kicker. I got a whole dollar and a half an hour. My mama had me working the grocery mill that summer and I only made 50 cents an hour, so I thought I had really died gone ahead. But that started my journey. Within a two-year timeframe, I had gone into the county office as the county bookkeeper. Our office was in the courthouse at that time, but the commissioners moved us across the street in the plant building until they built our building on South Main Street. So, I have had 10 superintendents, a lot of board members, a lot of board attorneys, but you know, I'm enjoying going to work every day of my life. And I have always enjoyed the working relationship that we've had with our county commissioners. Some of you don't know, but they won the county commissioner award for the state of North Carolina and McDowell County was one. We were recognized all over the state for their efforts and their funding even at a time when funding was difficult throughout the state. And we've had a wonderful working relationship together over the years and I thank all of you who've been my friends and I've worked with over the years. And as I said, I enjoyed coming to work every day and it has been a journey. There's an old proverb that says, "The journey of a thousand miles begins with just one step." And I took that step on August 1st, 1961, and it has ended today. And I've had the support of a lot of people. Thank you for this honor and on behalf of my family, my son is with me today, Jim Holland. And we will treasure this and thank you so much.
We are picture making, would you ever, you seen a picture? Oh, we almost picture making.
He's already told me. Okay, thank you. Thank you all so much. Thank you so much.
Okay. Moving along now to Island C in the 20s, we had Drexel property grant update and we had Mr. Hethecott and Bob Boyet and of course, Mayor Little here.
Chairman Brown, Commissars, Mr. Woodburn, we appreciate the opportunity to be here to talk to you about the Drexel project. I'm gonna talk very briefly and then leave it to the brains of the operation, Heather, to talk about the property. But did wanna mention, the county and city have jointly owned Drexel property for about five years now and we value and appreciate so much the partnership of McDowell County with the city. The ownership of that property was probably not something we initially wanted, but it was necessary. And now, we've made some progress with the initial cleanup of the property and it presents a great opportunity for development. You don't find a situation, especially in the mountains, with a 15-acre flat piece of property with all utilities, roads, close to downtown. It presents a wonderful redevelopment opportunity for the county and city. So, again, I wanted just to thank you for your partnership and we're looking forward to an unprecedented opportunity for state and federal grants that Planning and Development Director Hethecott will mention. And Mayor Little and I are here if you have any questions, otherwise we're just here for moral support. So, I'll turn it over to Heather.
Thank you, Bob. Thank you for having me tonight. It's a pleasure to be here and speak with you. Before I talk to you about plans for a grant, I also wanna just share and highlight the work that we've done together in partnership over the years. So, with that first round of funding, which was also coincidentally 1.2 million dollars, we were able to clean up the Drexel site, the surface contamination that was done by a previous property owner. That was approximately 5,300 yards, square yard of asbestos and lead-based material that was left behind from the previous owner. We were able to remove 4,000 gallons of propane, or excuse me, petroleum substances from underground storage tanks so that those didn't further leak and leach into the soil, cause further contamination. We did extensive environmental documentation on the site, both asbestos-containing, lead-based paint as well as soil and groundwater evaluation. That led to entering the North Carolina Brownfield Program, which protects us as current property owners from any liability, future liability that might be associated within previous environmental contamination on that site. So, we've done a whole lot of background work getting that done. Last year, or two years ago, I applied for a multi-purpose grant. Unfortunately, we weren't awarded that grant. It was a leap to take on that grant because, but the reason I chose that grant over a similar grant that we'll be applying for today is that the match requirement was much less. So, the multi-purpose grant was a $40,000 local match, whereas the cleanup grant was a 20% match to up to $500,000 for that grant. Knowing that we really needed to find that local funding to be able to support such a large project, I didn't wanna burden the taxpayers of the city of Marion and McDowell County. We tried to be very frugal in the way we look for funding. So, that's led us here today. I had a meeting with members of EPA and they recommended in review of our application to apply for the cleanup grant. What's wonderful about this grant is there's actually no match requirement this year. It is a $500,000 grant. It is part of the bipartisan infrastructure funding, the federal funding, that they are using to be able to offer this at no local match. So, a huge investment for us. And in addition to that, to look to do some other things with some additional funding from North Carolina's Rural Transformation Grant for downtown revitalization. That is up to a $900,000 grant that would help for downtown revitalization, for cleanup and also for planning. So, in your packet, I included a memo that kind of talked about, spelled out the additional cleanup that would be needed, which is removing the four underground storage tanks. Those are very large underground storage tanks on the site that would remove those and put clean fill back into the site. There's also one large oil-water separator that would be removed and then another underground storage tank that was used for the chemicals on-site for the finishing plant itself. So, it would remove all of that, put in clean fill for that site. It would also remove, there's 140 linear feet of old spur line that includes creosote ties. And I'm not an expert on that, but I was shocked to learn how the level of contamination associated with creosote ties. So, that would be another activity we would complete under this funding. We would also, there were, when we got into the project, of course, it was covered, 15 acres of demolition covering that entire site. And so, once we got in and removed that, we found that the previous owner had actually filled the basements of those buildings with that same material. Some of that material is organic and of course, it's also contaminated. So, before we can redevelop that site, that material needs to be removed. There's approximately 2,000 cubic yards of material in those underground basements. So, all of that cleanup work would pretty much finish up the known contaminants that we are aware of on-site. The other thing we've done is installed 12 monitoring wells to evaluate groundwater on that site. And so, that would be an ongoing process that we would work with with the North Carolina And so that would be an ongoing process that we would work with the North Carolina Department of Environmental Quality to ensure that any development that we do on that site in the future will not hurt the, the future occupants of that site. One of the other more exciting things I think about, other than cleaning up this site, is how are we going to redevelop this site? And so that rural transformation funding would be partially used to hire a consultant who can help us with a, a site plan for that site to determine the highest and best use for that property. A mixed-use site that offers an opportunity for commerce as, as well as residential, and even possibly some quasi-public options as well. We recently completed a regional transportation plan for our, our region. NCTOT rail division identified that location as a future passenger rail site.
Hey, Ben.
Of course, we know how quickly NCTOT works on any projects. However, knowing that and knowing that that might be a key, key point for, for having passenger rail back into Western North Carolina, that's a huge economic boon for, for our community. And so we don't want to sit on a site and not have it redeveloped. So what do we need as far as space is concerned if passenger rail is to come back to Western North Carolina? And then that will allow us to determine what area we have on that site that we can redevelop now and work, work with the private sector to identify lodging, mixed-use, commercial, residential, and really get the highest and best use out of this property. So that's what those two funding streams, those grant funds would be used for. The cleanup, the final cleanup work, and a site plan so that we can then start to talk with developers about redevelopment of that site. I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have. I will share that in order for us to apply for the $500,000 EPA grant, it will require sole ownership of the property. Currently, that property is in 50/50 ownership with the City of Marion and McDowell County Government. So it would have to be under one sole ownership. I did try my best to sway the EPA. I came very close, or at least they led me to believe I did. But they, but we do have to take sole ownership of it. So in doing that, we also have to, if we take sole ownership of it, we also have to have a Phase 1 study conducted within 180 days of taking ownership. I've reached out to consulting firms to identify what it would cost for us to update the 2016 Phase 1 study that we did through an EPA technical assistance grant. And it's $2,300 to update our, our Phase 1. And they can do that prior to November 22nd when the grant is due. Sole ownership also has to be done prior to November 22nd and it can be done through a quick claim deed process. So again, I'm excited about what this property could be in the future and hopefully will be successful in these two grant applications so that we can move forward with removing this light into the center of our community and getting some, some revenue streams coming back in.
Mr. Chairman, I'm excited and just, I'm making some motions, but I do want to say that we appreciate our, our city partners. Without partnerships, a lot of things will not get done. And Mr. Chairman, they have been excellent partners to work with, so thanks for that. And one thing that that partnership has done, there's been a trust system developed. Years ago, deed and property for this purpose might not have occurred, but because of the excellent partnership cooperation, there's a trust now. That trust would be guided by, of course, an interlocal agreement that would govern that. But we do appreciate you guys. And Mr. Chairman, I'm making a motion that we approve the grant submissions, the transfer of the county's property, deed of the interest to the city, and that would be governed by the interlocal agreement.
Let's move to second. Any discussion? All the folks say aye. I'd just like to say, backing up what David just stated, you know, it is a pleasure to work with our city. You know, we're, we have not, we're not just allies, we have become friends and that makes a lot of sense. We enjoy working with you guys. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your partnership. Thank you for all the hard work.
Okay. Next on the agenda, Dean, the property revaluation. We did a motion. All the folks say aye. Thank you, sorry about that. Next then on the agenda is the property revaluation schedule for values. Is it, we have Mr. Tammy Wiley and Hugh Kane here tonight? Dan's not here?
Yes, just been here.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioners. I'm here today to present to you, and you will find the book, the book there before you. The scheduled standards and rules that they use in our 2023 evaluation of all real property in the county. A copy of those, those scheduled values will be filed at the assessor's office of headed in the services building at 60 East Court Street for any public inspection. A public hearing will be held for any questions or concerns regarding anything within the, that will be held on Thursday, October 20th at 5:30 PM in the Commissioner's meeting room at the services building at 60 East Court Street. And once that, once that process goes through, then the adoption will come at the next minute of November 14th.
Any questions? So the documents will be approved later that year, right?
Yes, we approve those at a later date after the public hearing, if things have been approved in advance. Thank you so much. Happy to do that.
Next on the agenda tonight is the recreational center of project open view. And we have Brad Murphy here with us.
What were yours, sir? I apologize, we don't have any big checks to hand out.
Well, your service is pretty ubiquitous as hell.
Well, on behalf of Holland and Hemrick, we appreciate you letting us present to you. This is Vicky Carpenter passing on his, his site plans to you. She has been integral with the, with this process for our office as well. And as, as you all probably noticed, we had a few months ago, a bigger scheme than renovation of the gymnasium area and the natatorium. We scaled that back and we're focused on, on the, on the turf area. The, the current plan right now is, is we're meeting with a turf consultant and also a pool consultant on the project in addition to our normal consultants of structural, plumbing, mechanical, electrical, and landscape. A lot of consultants on this project, a lot of new parts. But we, as you can see from the site plan, we're trying to create a multi-purpose field that will, that will serve for baseball, softball, and some soccer fields. The previous plan did have turf, infield turf area, but as we've been talking to our turf consultant on similar facilities like this, they've gone all green and that allows you to do a bit more with the soccer fields. Because I think that infield area is a different color, it just doesn't work well for, for the lining of the soccer. And so we've, this is the current game plan. And we haven't really changed anything on the press box area. We're going to, we're going to still continue along that path and to have tiered seating, concrete seating for upwards of 300 feet or more. And then along the, along the backstop, you'd be able to park cars and have people sitting in tailgates and whatnot. And then the walking track that encompasses around the pool field. We're also in, in discussions with the church adjacent to the property to maybe look at. There is a, there's a knoll right there that will open that would degrade down and connect that parking lot so we're not creating a dead end for parking up in there. And for, for everything that we've been discussing, that's, they've been receptive to that. But those, those talks continue. And then the, the final thing, so we're looking at is not the natatorium now, but an outdoor pool. The current pool leaks a tremendous amount of water every day right now. And so we're, we would do a new pool with a splash pack component. The, the pool consultant's actually in Alaska right now, but the, the splash pack component's the real big variable. We, we just need to kind of hone in on and see what kind of elements that we, we want to have in the splash pad because that could, that could kind of push that number up or down. Well, I said that was the last thing, the very last thing is, one thing that we wanted to look at is to go ahead and, can we, will we have the funds to go ahead and demo that tiered, that old tiered seating area for, I think it maybe it was a, like a, what, how would Chad describe it, I guess a sunbathing deck maybe off of the pool? To, to go ahead and take that down and do a retaining wall against the church property line. There's a lot of, lot of money there to be spent in that retaining wall because that is about 15 to 16 foot in height up that wall, but that's also something that we're looking at. But everybody's on board and moving, we're moving forward with the plan that you see today. And the only thing that would happen with the current building is the current pool room is in that building and it's a, it's a sunken room. We would be pulling the pool systems out of that room because new pools these days, they're larger and plus it just doesn't, it doesn't work well in that space. And so we would want to reapportion that space to Chad's, Chad's, his, his department, make that into another office and do a new pool room. What we're looking at north of the locker room areas, that highlighted orange, light orange area, that would be the new pool room to contain all those pumps and pool systems.
Patrick, one thing he's mentioned, I know this is Phase 1 and we hope to build on the Phase 2 as, as many apps available, but he did mention a equipment room because prior to this, they've had equipment, it would be everywhere and he wants to bring that all in one location so he can have better oversight of that equipment. Is that, has that been somehow, you guys had conversations and see what would be the best choice of redevelopment now?
And we had a, in the first sketch, we had a, a large gymnastics studio and an equipment room addition. We could definitely look at doing an equipment room if, if there is future plans to keep adding on. We just want to properly place that on the site so we don't paint ourselves into a corner later on.
Personally, my perspective on this, the, the plan that you delivered, the big, the dream, the dream deal, facing that end, facing one year and then have whatever we do, have the capability at some point if we decide to, funds are available to go up and then close that port at a later date if we want to. So anything we're doing now, we need to make sure we're doing in the future that it could be added on.
Absolutely, yeah. And Ashley let me know, you know, to give ample room around the pool deck to go back in, you know, put some columns that can span that distance across the pool and have that on. But, and that's our plan moving forward. And then the retaining wall, we would like to design that as, if we can keep moving forward, that retaining wall would eventually become the exterior, one of the exterior walls for the rest of the addition.
Your question, Tom.
I do, I do want to say that with the new, with the pool just being removed and because of the issue there with the pool, what kind of timeline do you anticipate?
With the pool being taken out?
Well, with the project being completed, what kind of timeline?
The Phase 1.
Phase 1.
But with the pool, with the new pool still part of Phase 1?
Oh, yeah, sure. That's in.
Okay, yeah. So, so again, we have two extra consultants on this, so we're probably thinking of putting this out a bit sometime in late March.
Well, I totally know. You know, for me, I'm going to put the timeline. I, I would that pool be, the new pool be utilized next summer. And how is, we're going to be doing demolition when that field is not, the least amount of people in that area would be during the cold winters.
Right, right. I, I understand, just going off on all of our consultants lately, I, we're pushing, pushing.
Can you put a little pressure on them?
Absolutely.
Yes, sir. Tell them they're very important, we don't tend to get dust in front of us.
I understand, yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir.
We're excited about the movement on this project. We appreciate you coming in and giving us some feedback.
Appreciate your time. So, so there is a steep grade change from the turf area up to the parking lot area. And these walks that you see on that embankment, those are steeper than 1 to 20, which is ADA, but there will be handicap spots provided up at the top and along the bottom. And so that way we can, we can meet those ADA requirements to have, to have ADA access at both levels. It's a, just part of designing the, the building in the mountains. Just a lot of grade changes. Thank you.
All right, thank you. Good presentation. Move along to Island C. The Burke County work for the project.
Can we defer on that item to Mr. Ira when it comes back? If you want to skip the old business, we can make some.
All right, let's, let's move down to old business and sort of lay in the old business building projects with Woodburn.
Sure. Speaking of construction and psyche element, we've got quite a few capital projects. I've said before, we have a lot going on. We're taking a little bit of a breather before we kick off some more things. So a couple of months ago, you authorized hiring a firm for the services building renovation. When the process of getting that meeting scheduled, I believe that's tomorrow for that state-funded project. So again, the idea is to make the second floor of that building repurposed for, for future state office use. The next item, we've talked quite a bit about as well as the old EMS station, also known as Station 1. This is on Garden Street. This closed back in the spring when the headquarters opened on Barnes Road. Mr. Little, being our Public Services Director, he and I have talked about this quite a bit since he started in August about having this building removed as you previously directed. He would like to offer the building itself, not the property, but the building for sale. The, the interior of the building is steel, a steel frame that is about 45 years old that perhaps could be utilized by someone else if it was taken down and rebuilt somewhere else. So we've never done something quite like this, we at least want to try it. And so what we're suggesting and requesting authorization to do is to have that essentially, personal property essentially, listed for sale, give it till the end of October, somewhere in that timeframe depending on the asbestos removal. If it doesn't attract many bidders, then we'll just go out and bid demolition. We want to try.
Mr. Chairman, making a motion, we last had to try to sell the building and then buy it again first. If nobody is interested in receiving it, we're going to wrestle.
Good motion, second. Any discussion? All the folks say aye.
Thank you. The next item on building of this, the paving report that you authorized a couple of months ago. We do have a draft of that report. And I apologize, we did the best we could to get it. Just want to lunch board which is, we do not bring magnifying glasses. But the, the gist of what you have on the attached report is every county-owned parking lot or driveway, some instances greenways and others that are under county ownership or control, the engineer has gone through and scored each site for condition. And some of these are not surprises. Our headquarters just opened and so it has 104, great shape, obviously open and springy. Some on the other end are not surprising either. The mental health building, for example, Spalding Road, we, Mr. DeFoster and Mr. Little talked with both about having that scheduled for, for paving before we start this process. And that is our worst parking lot is number 32 on condition. And so, and there's. And so, and there's everything else in between. So what we would like to do is work with Mr. Riddle and myself and these consultants. You've got about three or four projects that are the worst of the worst, really work to identify those, nail them down as far as cost estimate. I've asked for that, haven't had it yet, but to work on getting that bid package together part of this point in the spring, because a lot of this is going to involve more than just laying that asphalt. There's some, some milling that's going to have to take place. There's some drainage improvements, especially a lot of our convenience sites on here that will need to be improved. So we can't do this in a month and a half or less that the plants are open, but we would like to take this time over the winter to put a good bid package together and get this out for advertisement, early spring when the plants reopen. Ideally again, having four or five sites that would be paving, depending on budget, is what a better unit pricing when you do four or five versus more or two.
The lot beside the services building, so you want to look, group that, I know we need to phase it in.
Probably go ahead and pave that one so we don't lose any more ground that's there. And the pricing on that, it's pretty straightforward, just putting down another layer of gravel and paving it at a much lower cost than essentially rebuilding the parking lot in some of these instances.
And so you're saying the top four, so the next, next worst lot, some water, next worst anybody has been seeing with the surety of this.
That's right.
So you're recommending book, just get a better deal, plants are getting ready to close, make asphalt, and then do those when just as they back up in the spring? I'll make a motion that we take the staff's recommendation to go ahead and allow for the paving of the services building parking lot due to the issue stated by Mr. Riddle and then pave the next top three worst lots, hate to say it like that, but that we have as soon as the plants open back up and then get bids back to the board.
Okay. So we have motion, Mr. Chair. All papers say aye. That's all we have?
Yes, sir, on the, the building.
Okay, let's, let's move back to appointments in Island Hill, Burke County Works and Forest Project. We have to check out now. Jeff, if you'd like to make the presentation?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Sorry to be in front of you twice in the same evening, that might be too much. I'll be quick. The state identifies what's called a mega site as a site submitted for industrial manufacturing projects that exceeds a thousand acres. And so the, the real large interest in state locations are of that, of that nature. In North Carolina, depending upon the quality, there might be three of those, there might be five in the entire state. And the reason is that the quality of several of those sites is, is pretty questionable. So you're talking about a, a thousand acres that can be acquired for a, a project. And as it happens, there is a, the furthest west, my understanding that one of those sites exists is in Chatham, Chatham County, or formerly was in Chatham. So there literally is not a site in, that, that meets the, the criteria. There is twelve hundred acres on the Burke-McDowell border. And the twelve hundred acres is adjacent to our county line. It sits entirely in Burke County, just north of I-40 and is owned by Great Meadows Corporation. There's a second two hundred and seventy-five acres that sits in McDowell County, also north of the, of the interstate that is not contiguous to it, but is extremely close. So the question is, could there be collaboration between Burke County and McDowell County to look at doing the things necessary in order to make the site a workable, a workable site? If, if a county has insufficient information on a site, nine times out of ten, maybe nineteen times out of twenty, the, the submission goes in the wastebasket and is not going to be considered. Company wants certain things to be in place. Examples of that would be an archaeology assessment, a wetlands delineation, a utility line provision estimates on when, when they would be available. If I said, and I did not say, any dangerous species report. You've got to have those things in place. Burke County has received a fifty thousand dollar grant from Duke Power to start looking at those things on this property. Burke and McDowell have been meeting at the staff level and with the, with the idea that perhaps collaboration would see the development of that, of that site. It's, it's really simple. Companies expect most of the time buildings that are modern and empty and they can, that they can move into. Shy of that, they expect what are called shovel ready sites. There's no way you're going to be able to, to do that on something this large. Dropping down to a third level, what we can do is have answers to their questions on whether or not it would work. You're not obligated to spend a nickel. You're not obligated to any formula or anything that's already been decided. What you're being asked is a, is to consider a resolution of cooperation with Burke County to see how the two counties might cooperate.
That'd be a great opportunity for Burke and McDowell.
It's a great opportunity for us because it's a, it's a resource, it's not industrial strategic.
Mr. Chair, I'd make a motion to approve the Walker proposal memorandum as to anything.
Second. Motion, second. Any discussion? All papers, will you say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay, very much. Out of G, the person has that they're going to get it down to the end tonight. So going into Old Lynn, out of B, we're here, the Maple Leaf Project, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you. I believe it was last month's meeting, the board was presented with a plan to prepare some improvements to the Maple Leaf complex on Fennel Road that the county owns, going on about eighteen years now. Specifically, staff talked about a playground and picnic shelter project. We've been talking about this for quite a while, but last month you authorized some preliminary information. Since then, you had a public meeting that was well attended, had a lot of good comments at that meeting. And as well, Mr. Silver has worked very diligently on preparing the grant. We do have a request tonight in front of you based on some additional information and putting the grant together. We have an opportunity to really maximize the state funding if we maximize our, our grant match. We're looking at different options with that, but the maximum grant is five hundred thousand dollars, which requires a one hundred thousand dollar match. The good news is we have fifty thousand of that set aside from the prior allocation you've made for this project. And so we are seeking additional sources for the other fifty thousand to get that one hundred thousand dollar match. But in case we're not able to get that, we're asking for the board's authorization to budget that and make strict budgets if we don't get that.
Mr. Chair, I'm making a motion that we allow staff to proceed to board with the grant and then if it's not awarded to go ahead and next year, when the budget process begins, to go ahead and allocate that.
Second, I have a motion. And the second, any of discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riddle. Next item, we see the Universal Technology Park ready, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you, sir. This is an item that Mr. Abernathy and I have talked a lot about, it's like many years now, but maybe not quite. Say, again, quickly, the county owns about three hundred and fifty acres surrounding the Universal Building down near the college. When this county and the board authorized purchase of that property, it was for the building, but also the surrounding property for other potentialities of it. So we've talked about housing, I think actually last year in the space, the housing project is still in, in planning, College, College Drive. Now we're going to talk about grading of the building sites. So it was hush hush and secret for a while until the announcement back in July, but Forza X One was announced as a new industry coming to the county. The site that they are proposing to locate in, it's a subject of our discussion tonight. So we received Golden Leaf Foundation funding of around nine hundred and fifty-two thousand dollars about nine months ago, a little bit longer now. And we had to come up with a project for them specifically with rough grading. And so we focused on this area where Forza is proposed to locate. We've worked with our engineer being Michael Woodley to come up with a bid document and we bid this, opened bids two Fridays ago and we were really pleased with this. So you've got, this is page thirty-six, where it's called a certified detabulation and they're in order of opening, in order of low to high, but you see those there on page thirty-six. And the engineer's letter on page thirty-seven is his recommendation for the low bid of seven hundred and forty-six thousand five eighty-six fifty to be awarded to Site Development Corporation of Rutherford County and then move on with them being the work of the project to get that done. So the action we're asking is awarding that low bid and accepting the bid from others.
Make a motion to accept the, what's presented as far as seven forty-six thousand.
Say it.
Motion, second. Any discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Good, thank you, Mr. Riddle. Next, out of D, the water system break.
Thank you. Most of this is an update. We do have an action item that's sort of late breaking as of Friday, so I'll get that in a second. Just real quick on the Nevo water system expansion, like I've said before, we're breaking expansion of that system into two phases. So Phase One is very close to being ready to bid. We've submitted the plans and specs to the Department of Environmental Quality, Public Water Supply Section for comments, which we have received and are answering those now. Again, if you're looking at the Nevo area, this is Jack Corpening Road and the Gentry Road, Bentwood Drive, part of NC one twenty-six, Lomson Pine Drive, a few others. That's Phase One. Phase Two is the area coming off of Wildlife Road, old number ten, in the area, also rolling Chapel Road coming back westward towards the city and area. That's only in very early design right now, so we don't have those plans yet. So again, hope to have Phase One advertised for bid, hopefully in the next month. Phase Two, I imagine that. Let's get down to Hoppy Tom Hollow Water Projects. Again, the county received that eight hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant about a month and a half ago. We're in the engineer selection process right now and so hopefully have a recommendation for you after November meeting. We've applied for Appalachian Regional Commission grant, working Mr. Abernathy on this one. There's some business impact. This is around exit ninety of expanding our Nevo water system. So we're, just answered a few questions on that application last week and hope to have a green light on whether it's going to be recommended for funding within the next couple of weeks, month or so. The next item is where, it was just an update, we are asking for some action based on new information. So this is about the extension of water to the West Marion Elementary School area. Was not understanding that Appalachian Regional Commission would have a fall funding round, but they are. And so ARC funding really likes business development, employment, economic development. So we have only just had a conversation, Mr. Silver and I, with the Federal Reserve Commission staff today and one email with ARC staff on whether we're eligible to apply even with one pending. Yes, we are, is the answer. But what we're looking to do to try to get towards the school is to define a project that would get at least to the Baker's Market area around the Island Hill intersection. Based on the funding, which is either four or five hundred thousand dollars, we don't have that figure yet, that's either the maximum grant for five hundred. We feel like we could get to that intersection with that funding plus the match. So I'm asking for authorization to do the pre-app on it, but I need more information. I don't have it yet, but if we get something theory back, we'll always pull back for some type of.
Now, Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we go ahead and approve the pre-app process to, for that grant.
Second. Motion, second. Any of discussion?
Would like to mention to the, mention getting the school system to see if they've got any extra monies because at one point they were considering trying to expand the water system down to West Marion Elementary and just, just per question.
And, and Mr. Chair, one good thing with that, with the West Marion expansion, you're going to pick up the school, of course, which would be great. And then you can loop around the other volunteer fire department, that would help with their ratings, they say, so they're excited about that. And, and a lot of, a lot of houses around the area that could possibly be put in there.
Yeah, that's something we've been seeing for certain years, the water system deliberation. So I'm excited about it. We have a motion in second, any of discussion? All papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Mr. Riddle.
Thank you.
That's all we have, water system.
Sir.
Out of D is the broadband update, Mr. Riddle.
Yes, sir. It has been reported, McDowell News and elsewhere, that the county and Spectrum are receiving a four million dollar grant from the state of North Carolina. Four million dollars is from the American Rescue Plan Act that is passing through the state. You had authorized about six months ago setting aside one million dollars of the county's ARPA allocation, but fortunately in this instance, Spectrum only asked for a hundred for matching funds. Out of that entire project, about thirteen hundred homes will be served. There are addresses on the state broadband office mapping site, which is publicly available. If people want to look that up, they can. I don't have the address, but they can contact our office for that. Or if someone wanted to call us to look up an address, we had someone today, Honeycup Road, North Marion, that asked and we could let them know that yes, they want the address of this. So that is underway as far as getting the contract documents together. As you can imagine, we're, like I said, ninety-three counties, ninety-four receive funding. There's going to be a lot of activity. Like we said, a lot of the vendors are very busy, so I imagine it's going to take some time to get that project going. We won it yesterday, but it's going to take time to get, get that line in the air and the ground for the case of D.
If I'm not mistaken, we have a contact number on their website and we would.
We've done that before. What we could do in this instance is put some social media information out there specifically about it, but just general.
Was it along to, Mr. Craig, we have a brief trade about it, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. The first item I would go through would be say, are you all good? We want to focus on the second item a little bit more so than normal. So we do have the EMS write-offs totaling a little over $38,000 as to go through.
Ms. Chairman, make a motion to approve the EMS write-off that's presented with a note that all efforts have been made to collect this money and just not collected red.
Yes, sir. No estates, no insurance.
We have a motion in a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you. The next item in Ms. Craig has a handout. I was asked to provide a copy of this document, which I got today. So the county owns the mental health building on Spalding Road. That building was built by Foothills Area Program in 1990. The county has owned it since about 2014 or so, when that entity was merged into Spalding Mountain Center. So since it was built, it's been home to a mental health provider for the county, starting at Foothills and now with RHA, which is a private entity. We have a lease with RHA and have had one for about five years with them. And it's pretty standard for our leases. And our standard lease says that any entity that would like to sublet space, they have to get your permission. It's just a good way to operate. Well, RHA staff has approached, approached our staff, me, and indicated that they are placing very small pharmacies in all of their practices throughout the region, which is in western North Carolina and central North Carolina. The IDAV, you know, they have the clinicians there, you know, while someone, before they get out in the community and forget about it or whatever, lack of transportation, they could see the pharmacy for its own premise, get the prescription, and move along. And so we were again contacted RHA for you to approve this lease. I've asked for a floor plan for you to review. I do not have that, but I do have the sublease, which we have looked at. It's pretty standard. I've not had an opportunity to share it with Mr. Coates, it's so fresh. But you have standard lease documents here. I will point out that RHA, I was asked this question today, there is a revenue component for RHA from this vendor, which is General Health Care. RHA would be paid $635 a month for this sublease. And so I was asked to provide that information to you. So that would be paid to RHA for that sublease. So the question was asked, if the county increased the rent we're charging RHA, and you can renegotiate the lease as a condition of approving the sublet, I would say.
I think we're definitely looking at that. You know, I'm all for if companies, I think that this board don't have the approval of the final design, since that is a county building and they're going in and remodeling a section of it, we need to have, and with Mr. Brown's building background, this board definitely needs to approve any kind of fiscal change to that building. And I think that this board ought to receive on behalf of the taxpayers, half the revenue of that rental lease to the, their proposal.
Would it be okay to provide those terms back to RHA? I've asked for the building plans, but in the meantime, maybe have that back.
And I would also like the county attorney to review the, have the, for this.
And any renovations they did for, they make, they're, they're responsible for making sure of the security of this facility, that it wouldn't be housed in medications and stuff.
That's right.
At their cost.
The pharmacy, whatever, would be paying the cost on the renovation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and have staff contact RHA and get the board the design of the proposed changes, modifications to the building. That we also request that the county receive half the rent that's going to be received by RHA.
And this, this would be, we need to look at the potential, staff would look into if we need to adjust our lease agreement for RHA.
And also have your staff the leeway to look at the adjusting of the lease term.
Say. Good motion in a second. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you. The next item under administrative items, you have, in your packet here, you have three projects, and we do have a fourth one that I was handed on the way out that is related to state funding that we need to try to get back as quickly as possible. This is related to our Nevo water funding, actually. So we have, you have previously adopted a budget ordinance that apparently is not to the state's liking, so this is a revised format. So we would ask that you adopt the Streamflow Rehab Project, the Hoppy Tom Project, the Local Assistance and Travel Consistency Project, and the capital project ordinance for our Nevo Water Project.
Ms. Chairman, the Local Assistance and Travel Consistency Project, that is to be paid out in two fiscal years, is that correct?
Is that right?
Four twenty-five, five twenty-six?
Yes, sir. That's over fiscal year, it's two years, so that's a total.
And I talked to Mr. Wood today, as far as I'm concerned, I would, we've got payment that needs to occur, and we leave the revenue to pay as we begin next spring. So I would make a motion on this Local Assistance and Travel Consistency Project, that first wave of the half of that funding being dedicated for payment projects next spring that are identified as the four or the three next most needed lots we have.
Say. I agree with that. Good motion in a second. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Thank you.
That's all over the water system. Next on the agenda is the item mail we added to the agenda, the opioid lawsuit. We've got Ms. Wood and the county attorney, Greg Coates, I think, speaking of this.
We can tack him this. So we had a really great meeting last week where we gave an update, excuse me, on the opioid lawsuit and settlement process. And that meeting was again required by the MOU, but it was a really great opportunity to share and hear some good information, statistics on our opioid crisis in the community. Mr. Coates mentioned at that meeting that there are other potential lawsuits coming down the rail with that. And I mentioned a few of those that might be with retailers, that might be with consulting firms, might be with actual manufacturers beyond what they make. Right? So we want to make sure that we have the authority to sign those lawsuit forms when necessary without having necessarily to come back each time and say, are you okay with this one, this one? As long as the conditions are the same, we're using the same legal firm, of course, contingency base on the award.
Ms. Chairman, as long as the obligations and packages are the same, I make a motion to your staff to do the same.
Say. Make a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Was it, I'm sorry, but I thought there was going to be some discussion on, Danny was going to come back and talk about, what was that in November, as far as...
He will come back with the staff changes and then may put him back a little bit, but he'll come back with the recommendations. Yes, sir. We agree with him.
Okay. Was it along to, Mr. Craig, we have a brief trade about it, Ms. Wood?
Thank you. The first item I would go through would be say, are you all good? We want to focus on the second item a little bit more so than normal. So we do have the EMS write-offs totaling a little over $38,000 as to go through.
Ms. Chairman, make a motion to approve the EMS write-off that's presented with a note that all efforts have been made to collect this money and just not collected red.
Yes, sir. No estates, no insurance.
We have a motion in a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes?
Thank you.
Say. Next on the agenda is the item mail we added to the agenda, the opioid lawsuit. We've got Ms. Wood and the county attorney, Greg Coates, I think, speaking of this.
We can tack him this. So we had a really great meeting last week where we gave an update, excuse me, on the opioid lawsuit and settlement process. And that meeting was again required by the MOU, but it was a really great opportunity to share and hear some good information, statistics on our opioid crisis in the community. Mr. Coates mentioned at that meeting that there are other potential lawsuits coming down the rail with that. And I mentioned a few of those that might be with retailers, that might be with consulting firms, might be with actual manufacturers beyond what they make. Right? So we want to make sure that we have the authority to sign those lawsuit forms when necessary without having necessarily to come back each time and say, are you okay with this one, this one? As long as the conditions are the same, we're using the same legal firm, of course, contingency base on the award.
Ms. Chairman, as long as the obligations and packages are the same, I make a motion to your staff to do the same.
Say. Make a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Was it, I'm sorry, but I thought there was going to be some discussion on, Danny
was going to come back and talk about, what was that in November, as far as...
He will come back with the staff changes and then may put him back a little bit, but he'll come back with the recommendations. Yes, sir. We agree with him.
Okay. Was it along to, Mr. Craig, we have a brief trade about it, Ms. Wood?
Thank you. The first item I would go through would be say, are you all good? We want to focus on the second item a little bit more so than normal. So we do have the EMS write-offs totaling a little over $38,000 as to go through.
Ms. Chairman, make a motion to approve the EMS write-off that's presented with a note that all efforts have been made to collect this money and just not collected red.
Yes, sir. No estates, no insurance.
We have a motion in a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Was it, I'm sorry, but I thought there was going to be some discussion on, Danny
was going to come back and talk about, what was that in November, as far as...
He will come back with the staff changes and then may put him back a little bit, but he'll come back with the recommendations. Yes, sir. We agree with him.
Okay. Was it along to, Mr. Craig, we have a brief trade about it, Ms. Wood?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the item mail we added to the agenda, the opioid lawsuit. We've got Ms. Wood and the county attorney, Greg Coates, I think, speaking of this.
We can tack him this. So we had a really great meeting last week where we gave an update, excuse me, on the opioid lawsuit and settlement process. And that meeting was again required by the MOU, but it was a really great opportunity to share and hear some good information, statistics on our opioid crisis in the community. Mr. Coates mentioned at that meeting that there are other potential lawsuits coming down the rail with that. And I mentioned a few of those that might be with retailers, that might be with consulting firms, might be with actual manufacturers beyond what they make. Right? So we want to make sure that we have the authority to sign those lawsuit forms when necessary without having necessarily to come back each time and say, are you okay with this one, this one? As long as the conditions are the same, we're using the same legal firm, of course, contingency base on the award.
Ms. Chairman, as long as the obligations and packages are the same, I make a motion to your staff to do the same.
Say. Make a motion in a second. Any other discussion? All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Was it, I'm sorry, but I thought there was going to be some discussion on, Danny
was going to come back and talk about, what was that in November, as far as...
He will come back with the staff changes and then may put him back a little bit, but he'll come back with the recommendations. Yes, sir. We agree with him.
Okay. Was it along to, Mr. Craig, we have a brief trade about it, Ms. Wood?
Thank you. The first item I would go through would be say, are you all good? We want to focus on the second item a little bit more so than normal. So we do have the EMS write-offs totaling a little over $38,000 as to go through.
Ms. Chairman, make a motion to approve the EMS write-off that's presented with a note that all efforts have been made to collect this money and just not collected red.
Yes, sir. No estates, no insurance.
We have a motion in a second. All the papers say aye?
Aye.
Any votes? Okay. Thank you, Ms. Wood.
Was it, I'm sorry, but I thought there was going to be some discussion on, Danny
was going to come back and talk about, what was that in November, as far as...
He will come back with the staff changes and then may put him back a little bit, but he'll come back with the recommendations. Yes, sir. We agree with him.
Okay. Was it along to, Mr. Craig, we have a brief trade about it, Ms. Wood?
Thank you.
Next on the agenda is the item mail we added to the agenda, the opioid lawsuit. We've got Ms. Wood and the county attorney, Greg Coates, I think, speaking of this.
We can tack him this. So we had a really great meeting last week where we gave an update, excuse me, on the opioid lawsuit and settlement process. And that meeting was again required by the MOU, but it was a really great opportunity to share and hear some good information, statistics on our opioid crisis in the community. Mr. Coates mentioned at that question today, there is a revenue component for RHA from this vendor, which is General Health Care. RHA would be paid $635 a month for this sublease. And so I was asked to provide that information to you. So that would be paid to RHA for that sublease. So the question was asked, if the county increased the rent we're charging RHA, and you can renegotiate the lease as a condition of approving the sublet, I would say.
I think we're definitely looking at that. You know, I'm all for if companies, I think that this board don't have the approval of the final design, since that is a county building and they're going in and remodeling a section of it, we need to have, and with Mr. Brown's building background, this board definitely needs to approve any kind of fiscal change to that building. And I think that this board ought to receive on behalf of the taxpayers, half the revenue of that rental lease to the, their proposal.
Would it be okay to provide those terms back to RHA? And I've asked for the building plans, but in the meantime, maybe have that back.
And I would also like the county attorney to review the, have the, for this.
And any renovations they did for, they make, they're, they're responsible for making sure of the security of this facility, that it wouldn't be housed in medications and stuff.
That's right.
At their cost.
The pharmacy, whatever, would be paying the cost on the renovation, correct?
Yes, sir.
Yeah.
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion that we go ahead and have staff contact RHA and get the board the design of the proposed changes, modifications to the building. That we also request that the county receive half the rent that's going to be received by RHA.
And this, this would be, we need to look at the potential, staff would look into if
So where it gets a little tricky on the specific part about budgeting, our information lags so much because of the process to have that collection happen, and then the funding transmitted to the counties. So what you've got in your packet, again, it's a little small, apologize for that, a lot of doubt, is the entire fiscal year payment for, the fiscal year that ended in June. And if you look at it, it starts in August and ends in July. Our fiscal year runs from July to June, obviously. And so what you've got is August remittance, is July twenty-twenty-one sales, going all the way through June twenty-two sales. And zoom in a little bit, I'm not reading glasses. Just talk about Article thirty-nine, the one cent sales tax. It's a little over a hundred thousand dollars over budget for that particular sales tax for the year. So I was asked a question earlier today, is that, where is that money right now? Again, this is last fiscal year. So anything that happened in this report, it is booked to last year. So if it's over, it is booked to the fund balance. So you can appropriate fund balance anytime you would like to, but it's not in this year's budget. Does that make sense? So again, you came with one of sixty-two over budget based on where we ended the year?
What would that percentage equal, Mr. Wood?
As far as?
Never was, but the amount received, the amount that was budgeted?
It's about two percent over, over budget. And what you may or may not remember, but I'll point it out in case you don't, that number that we ended is higher than what we started the year. So what we try to do as staff, being Ms. Bell and our finance director, once we get to about January, we have a pretty good idea on, as much as you can tell about how things are working, about what our revenue is going to be in that line item, that revenue source. Things can always change, but we don't recommend touching that number at least until then because it lags so much. So what we'll probably usually do is if self-insurance, for example, is running over, or an unexpected expense came along, if we're doing well with sales tax, we might recommend, okay, we feel somewhat comfortable opening this revenue to cover this unexpected expense, transportation repair, roof repair, whatever it might be, that's way over what this budget funds. So it's one of the hardest to predict, it's one of the hardest to budget for, and hardest to anticipate in the year what's going to happen. So very hard to answer maybe what would happen with it. We hope people continue what they've been doing, is spending mon- money locally, because that helps us out the best when people shop here.
Enter the sales too, is that?
It does. It's a Amazons and the Walmarts and places that you shop at home. It's actually better for people if they do not, this is a commercial, perhaps, prefer people to shop here, shop local, as been said ad nauseam. The second best option is to shop online, at least as far as sales tax is concerned, because we receive that sales tax revenue as if it was being purchased here locally. If someone goes to Asheville, Hickory, Morganton, we get a very small percentage of that from the statewide share. So it's local first, online second, and then somewhere else in-state if at all.
Exactly, a hundred grand, two percent. Nothing else changes, no extra heavy spending takes place. Our general fund at the beginning of the fiscal year was twenty point six percent, so it would go up to approximately twenty-two point six.
Approximately. We're hoping to get somewhere close to that number. So we, we will, our auditors actually came today, and they'll be with us for a few weeks. And so that's one of the first things we ask them, to block down this, start zeroing in that number. It helps answer some questions.
Mr. Chairman, I say the staff was pretty spot on, though, in a number that can fluctuate, depending on external circumstances, that y'all did pretty good in your budget red redation. I mean, that's pretty tight.
Thank you, Mr. Wood. Next on the agenda is the, and B is the tax management, Mr. Wood?
Yes, sir. These are routine, your rebuilds, releases, and refunds.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the releases, reveals, and refunds as presented.
Motion in second, any discussion? All the papers say aye? Aye. Any further? Okay. Next is, I'd be, board members, historic preservation commission?
The only thing that I have, we are still, we still have vacancy on the library door, it's easier, we're still out of time.
All right. Thank you, Madam Chair.
And I'll take the historic preservation item, again, appropriate to the setting, I thought. So we have on our books a historic preservation commission ordinance. Probably about twenty years ago, maybe a little bit longer, that board set up a historic preservation commission for the county. What they can do is they can review landmark status for significant historic properties. If it's a certified, if the county is a certified local government, that commission can comment on national historic preservation, sorry, national register nominations. It also can be a resource for historic property evaluation and discussions. So one of the issues we had years ago is we just had a lack of staff. We have Mr. Hartman, who does an outstanding job, of course, but he was the planning department at the time. And so we do have another full-time staff member now that helps with us. I did ask her, is this something I could go to the board with, that you help out and talk to Mr. Hartman, of course, your supervisor? And both were supportive of reactivating the commission, with the goal of being a certified local government, to where we would then be eligible for those national register nomination common, as well as historic preservation grants that we're not eligible for now. So it'll take some time. It's not just any average Joe off the street, it would need to be people that are experts in the field. It takes some time to get all that out.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve with reactivating the historic preservation commission.
Motion in second, any discussion? All the papers say aye? Aye. Any further? Okay, thanks, sir. Next item left, the annual Christmas parade and road closure request, I think we all know what that's about.
Mr. Chairman, make a motion to approve the road closure request as presented.
Okay, got it, man. So, any discussion? All the papers say aye? Aye. All right. Now we'll move back to item G, the historic person house update, and we've got, Chuck Abernathy, where you can do that.
Would you like to do the citizen comment first?
Okay, let's hold on a second, just go ahead and do the citizen comment, we'll do this last, if it's a trade. We'll move down to five, the citizen comments, did we have?
Yes, we have four in total.
Okay, we'll move back to item G, which is the historic person house update, where Al, Abernathy can come up with a little.
So again, we've, sorry about that. Well, that's, that's difficult. You've had a presentation on the interpretive center already, and so that's the major project that we have underway, no reason to repeat it, but what you did goes, probably saves the, saves the project and makes it, and makes it happen. So we, we thank you very much for that. We have many other things going on out here. Martha, you want to just come up and say?
Thank you.
We've got board members here.
Gracing us with your presence. For those of you that don't know, this is the site in the Carson House where McDowell County was formed, and we just, we just like to celebrate every year that piece of history. We're so, so excited to have children coming back from field trips. We just had about four hundred and thirty children out here last Thursday.
My fourth grader, Les, she was here. She wants to come back. I told you I didn't go stories, but I would go to the staff.
Well, we, we're starting back up since COVID, our junior historians and Carson House kids, sort of young children that come out, so any child that's interested, contact us and we'll get them involved with some of those volunteer activities. And we have continued even through the pandemic, helping out with projects with the high school, for example, coming out and helping out with the archaeology project, with carpentry repairs. We're going to have the chorus back out here to do, help us out with some of our Christmas celebrations. So always, we're just always wanting to draw the young kids and teenagers in to help do things here at the Carson House. We also encourage things like, we're having the Rotary Club out here next week, we're really excited for their annual fundraiser out here, so. Another thing that we've continued is the monthly markets to allow local business, people and crafters and farmers to come out and sell their wares. We've had food truck availability, so we do that once a month on the fourth Thursday. It's always a lot of fun. And of course, we really welcome the Over Mountain Victory Trail every year, that just encourages all citizens to look back at their history and be proud of things, and we just appreciate, appreciate y'all being here, and we'll see a lot of you tomorrow. Thank you.
Thank you, Martha.
Thank you.
We appreciate all you guys do to help keep this thing going. It takes a lot of work, a lot of effort, and a lot of love to be the Carson House and for the county, so thank you to everybody that plays a part in this, in our board. Thank you very much. Okay. Any, Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. We've been meeting out here for many years, I don't know exactly how many years the board has held their, up to been meeting out here. And as you say, Mr. Chairman, the volunteers, the volunteer board at the Carson House, they're phenomenal, and they've got excellent leadership, and you can tell that by what's happening on these grounds and what the future plans are. And so I would like to make a motion that the board, instead of the Carson House treating us to sublet and the guests, I would make a motion that, on behalf of the county residents, we buy the food and say thank you to the excellent staff and board directors at govern what goes on here at Carson House.
So, all the papers say aye?
Thank you.
Thank you, guys. Go out here and motion review.
Somebody?
We are adjourned.